Hello Wakefield, good evening. Welcome to our town council meeting of January 23rd, it is 7:01. I call this meeting, virtual meeting, to order. Can we please start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I will do an attendance, we are all here, but we are going to get used to roll call votes today. So let me do a little practicing, Councilor Chines.
Here.
Councilor Dennehy.
Yeah.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Here.
Councilor Vincent.
Here.
Councilor Smith Galvin.
Here.
And Councilor McLean. We just lose him?
It looks like we just lost him.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
So hopefully he'll hop back on. We were all here a minute ago, but.
Right.
Sherry, please be on the lookout for him, rejoin in.
I will, sure.
Do we have anyone for public comment?
We have no one tonight, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item five, the fiscal year budgets. Can I pass this to Steve?
You certainly can, and Kevin and as requested, Demograph is here as well. So the next group of budgets are more of our kind of benign town hall budgets. And I think they're all in very, very good shape. And you will note that the grand total of the set that you saw on January 9th and the set that you saw today, they will come in at point 28% over last fiscal year. We talked about at the tri board meeting how it was important that fiscal year 24 be as frugal as we can. So coming in at point 28% over last year is pretty good. And I was much cheaper than Kevin. I wanted to make that level funded, but Kevin talked me out of it. So Kevin will lead off on them. Madam Chair, if you wish, you can take these all in one vote at the end to reduce the roll call, but that's certainly up to you. But I think that you'll find that these are budgets are very benign and very good shape. When we do get to the veterans budget, I'll have a couple of things to say, as I will thank the liaison counselor Vincent. But it's okay, I'll turn that over to Kevin.
Yeah, I think let's do one at a time, Steve. I think, no, I like having the questions and so let's do it. And I asked my counselors, we're first time in a while we've all been virtual. So just use the raise hand function or raise hand. And between Sherry, myself and Steve, we'll see you if you have questions or comments.
I will definitely do each budget one at a time, but you could do one vote at the end if you want. That's really what I was saying.
Let's start with budget four, Treasury Department.
Good evening, Madam Chair. We'll start off with the treasurer's budget. For fiscal 24, we are recommending that this budget be increased $5,407. There is an increase in personal services of $5,507, which is due to a contractual and negotiated increase. There was a couple of small decreases under contractual services. We reduced postage by $50 and travel by $50, both because of usage. Major expenses within this budget, there's a line item $13,000 for tax title. This is for attorney's fees and land court costs. And there's a line item $7,500 for bank charges. This is the cost to maintain the town's bank accounts and the cost of checks. These two line items are usually spent in the second half of the fiscal year. The total fiscal 24 budget request for the treasurer's office is $239,324.
Great, any questions or comments about the Treasury Department? Okay. Let's, we will do them all at the end then. Sherry, have you heard word of our other counselor?
I have not yet.
Okay, so moving on to budget 18, fire alarm traffic signals.
The next budget, the fire alarm budget, we are recommending that this budget be increased $3,811 over the current fiscal year. This department has been very busy with ongoing new development within town. They've been doing utility pole changeovers, fixing and replacing aging traffic and dispatch equipment. They also maintain traffic signals at intersections in municipal fire alarm circuits, which includes master boxes at private businesses. These master boxes that are at private businesses, we do charge a yearly fee, $225 each. There are approximately 170 boxes within town. So we collect approximately $35,000 a year. The total budget request for fiscal 24 is $70,511.
Thank you, Kevin. Councilor Chines.
Thank you, just a quick question. The increase in the materials and supplies, you mentioned Kevin that, you know, they've been busier because of the development in town. Is it safe to assume that that increase is tied to increased development and increase, you know, demand for boxes?
Yes, that is. Also, they do buy some material upfront to have on hand in case it's needed. So that's why that expense seems higher than half the year, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Gill. And this is perhaps a question other for you or maybe Mr. Mayo. I know that you were talking about things like utility pole replacements and other, I'll call it infrastructure, you know, upgrades that have to be done. And it seems like that at least is in part because of new construction, but at a minimum, it's a benefit to new construction. Where is, I know with ZBA, Steve, we have certain things, you know, certain conditions or the certain negotiations that we have. Where does, where do things like utility poles, crossing streetlights, all those sorts, you know, traffic lights, all those sorts of items kind of fall on the priority list when that's being negotiated? Are we seeing that in most of the new projects that are coming through in some form?
Yeah, I think ones that are asked for them, like I know we have one coming on North Ave coming up, so yes, and I think at the head of the lake, we may be getting some upgrades as well. But yes, those come in and we ask for them as we go.
So I think.
It won't show up here, it's not in this budget though.
Right, I'm just thinking specifically about North Ave, for instance. And that I feel like, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about, you know, safe pedestrian and cyclist crossings and the like. And it just feels like those sorts of projects especially are really ripe for trying to lean into development to make sure that we're not just maybe maintaining infrastructure. Although I think even, you know, upgrading infrastructure makes sense, but also expanding, you know, the safety features we have on the developer's dime, not on the taxpayers.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you, any other questions? Okay, moving on to the next budget, budget 19, emergency management.
Yes, the emergency management budget, we are requesting an increase to this budget of $1,676 of the current fiscal year. This increases all in personal services and is for a negotiated salary increase. Main expenses within this budget under contractual services, there's a $10,000 line item for the emergency operation center, which is the room at the public safety building. These funds are used to service upgrade and maintain the equipment that's in the control center. And there's also a $16,000 line item for the notification system, which is basically the town's reverse 911. The total fiscal 24 budget request is $90,527.
Great, and any questions? Okay, moving on to budget 20, inspectional services.
Yes, inspectional services, we are recommending an increase to this budget of $18,329 over the current fiscal year. The increase in personal services of $15,629 is for contractual and negotiated increases. We did increase contractual services, $200 to upkeep the town's plotter machine, which is used to scan all the town's documents that come into the inspectional services. And under materials and supplies, we increased the books line item $2,000. They're coming out with new building and electrical codebooks in fiscal 24. So additional funds were needed here. Main expenses within this budget, vehicle allowance, $6,600, which is a contractual item. Telephone, $5,000. I do want to point out that this department does collect revenue. In fiscal 21, we collected about $680,000. Last fiscal year, $682,000. And currently in fiscal 23, year to date, we've collected over a million dollars, which is the highest it's ever been since I've been here. So kudos to the inspectional services, doing a great job. The total budget request for fiscal 24 is $457,107.
Thank you, any questions? Councilor Chines.
Thank you. Just a question on this one, as we think about the workload of the team. So, you know, I was looking at the number of permits and inspections in fiscal 2020, fiscal 2021, excuse me, about 1,000 permits and, you know, almost 1,200 inspections, you know, for a staff of five. And I guess, you know, I'm curious, you know, either Mr. Mayor or Mr. Gill, do we have a sense as to how sort of our staffing in this area benchmarks to other communities? And, you know, as we think about sort of what's coming up in the next couple of years, I think, you know, reflected in the money we're collecting and building permits. Is this an area where we need to think about either, you know, temporarily or more permanently adding staff over time?
Well, last year we did add in some administrative staff, which was badly needed, as you recall. I talk with the inspectors every morning. It's kind of where I, my first stop on my way in. And they're in early around seven o'clock, so where they're kibitzing. I think they are relative to other communities. I think we do run perhaps a little bit lean. But I do think that they're keeping up very well. I've heard nobody complaining about, you know, inspections being delayed and what have you. So I think at this point, we are keeping up with it, but it is something to look at, particularly when the schools come on. And that'll be something when we will need probably some extra help, because that's every day you have to be there at some point, you know, when they get up and running in a year or two. And that may be something we can address at that time. But I think right now we're okay.
Yeah, I would maybe just ask if we can, you know, make sure that we're monitoring, you know, turnaround times for inspections and things like that. You know, just so that as, as things do kind of heat up for them, which, which it does seem like it will, you know, that we've got some, some metrics or some data that we can look at to assess, you know, when and if we need to think about, you know, adding staff or, you know, down the line, when and if we need to think about, you know, adjusting the department in the other direction.
Yeah, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan, that's a great suggestion. And just to, to add to that is, you know, the Kevin walk through the increase in the amount returned back. I don't really know what number that signifies of inspections. And so if we could kind of monitor that and also days that it took, that would just be helpful and maybe get an update. You're right, the school will be, you know, the schools will be too big projects. So just to kind of get a baseline before we enter that time period. Councilor Dombrowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we have a sense, Kevin, as to where, what the trajectory looks like in the next few years? Obviously, we've gone from 600,000 up to a million, which is, which is a significant jump, you know, in a year's time. Based on what we currently see, you know, down the pipeline, do we have any sense of what that revenue looks like going forward? Will it continue to increase? I mean, is a million kind of a bit of an outlier for this year?
A million is a high point for for a full fiscal year. And this is only for a half a year. So this is definitely an outlier. I will point out that we did, we used to share the services from our inspectional services department, the building inspector and the inspectors, plumbing and gas and electrical with another community. We have since stopped that. And the building inspector and the other inspectors, they're all focused on Wakefield now. So, you know, I think it's a really good thing for our buck here.
I guess my other question, not necessarily strictly to this budget, but in general, several of us were at a conference this past weekend. And one of the things that really struck me is they were talking about when a fiscal year's revenue comes in. And they said that, that the states said that two thirds of fiscal year's revenue comes in between December and, and end of June. Is that consistent with us as well? Because the budgets we've seen so far seem like, you know, pretty balanced in terms of our spend, and I wasn't sure on the revenue side, if that tracks with what we see historically.
For estimated receipts for the town, two thirds would probably come in, in that timeframe, the second half of the fiscal year, where our biggest estimated receipt would be motor vehicle excise, which is over $4 million a year. And that big excise commitment of the bills don't get mailed out until February. So it would be the second half of the year. So that's probably correct.
Okay.
For us.
Perfect, thank you.
I don't see anyone else going back to Councilor Chines.
Thank you, just to follow up on that, Kevin. When you talk about the two thirds sort of backloading, you're talking about non-property tax revenue. I would think that the property tax component of our revenue is pretty evenly spread out.
It is, more property tax revenue does come in in the second half of the year, where the first half of the year is an estimated bill based on last year. And where the taxes have gone up year after year. So that, that would mean when the actual bills go out in the second half of the year, those would be higher to some degree.
Got it, so just when whatever the levy increases that gets voted on kind of gets trued up, that's when you see that slight backloading in revenue?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on inspectional services? If not, we will move on to budget 27, recreation department.
The recreation budget, we are requesting an increase to this budget over the current fiscal year of $2,990. This increases all in personal services and as for contractual negotiated increase. This budget is covered from fees generated from the recreation program and activities account. Those funds are then transferred from that account to the general fund to cover this expense. In fiscal 22, we charged fees of about $550,000 and expended $503,000. The current revolving fund balance is $42,000. And the total budget request for fiscal 24 is $122,589.
And I see that we are joined by Dan McGrath, hello. Anything you want to add about your department?
So we're just, we're just plugging away, we're doing a lot of different things this summer. You know, first pickleball is just, it's out of this world. I can't believe the trajectory of this program. If you told me five years ago that we'd be where we are today, I'd have been stunned. Our numbers, you know, now are bigger than they were pre pandemic, which is great. It's so popular and we're just going to keep expanding on that because people are asking for more of it. We have a great collaboration coming up this summer with the Board of Health and with the police department. We are going to run a summer day program, a four day program, right after school ends. The community, yeah, the school resource officers will be the camp counselors. My staff will be supportive of them. And we'll run some sessions for kids about RAD, we'll do some stranger danger stuff. We will do some fingerprinting, we'll have canine demonstrations, motor vehicle, you know, touch truck kind of day. Board of Health will do stuff with the kids about sun safety and nutrition. And then my staff will do what we always do, sports and games, and keep the kids busy. We have some great collaboratives from, from town who are going to work with us as well, some businesses. So it's a real exciting program that we're looking forward to. We have some new enrichment programs that we're going to offer this year. And I know those are popular amongst the Chines children, so we hope to see them here this year. Volleyball has just exploded in town where our girls team has become big. And now there's going to be a boys program this year at the high school. So we expect that to kind of keep going up and up. More tennis programs, we are going to do some classes at the fitness court. So I'm working with the Chamber of Commerce to get some of our local fitness groups down there to help us teach people how to use the equipment, do free demonstrations for them. I'm also working with the chamber to do some maybe children's concerts and some adult concerts, just something different. I've done these in Reading, so I think it's time to add them here in Wakefield, too. They've always gone over very well, they're free to the public. And, you know, we have our, we have our photo op at the Fit Court on Wednesday, so I hope you guys can come, even if there's a little snow there. The National Fitness Campaign really wants to see a picture of all of us, so we'll be there to take one and send it over to them. And that's kind of the exciting things that we have coming up, along with everything else that's just going to, you know, happen.
I'm going to take Chair's prerogative and ask you some questions, Dan. Thank you for all of that. So Fit Core, are people using the Fit Core?
So some of the neighbors have told me that it is quite popular down there. You know, not so much now with the snow, but, you know, it has been used up until now.
And then when you talked about pickleball, is it still outdoors and indoor? Like, are we still doing indoors or just?
We are just indoors at this point. You know, people I think may go outdoors, but, you know, obviously, we're not shoveling off tennis courts. We're the pickleball courts, we don't want to damage them.
That popularity is the indoors.
Yeah, yeah.
And how often, how often do you see town administrator Steve Mayo playing pickleball?
Well, during the hours that we have, I'm sure Steve's doing other things. Probably pretty busy during the mornings.
Good, good response about your boss, good job there. It's all great, I always love hearing all that you're doing. And I think, you know, we've had this conversation with our budgets in the past, especially last time when we discussed like the Council on Aging. I think that you talked about the collaboration with the Board of Health and Public Safety. I think, you know, you've always been really good about that and finding ways to collaborate with the library and the Council on Aging. I just think the more we do that in our town, the stronger programming we do. So I just, and it sounds like, you know, you're already thinking about it with the high school and boys volleyball. So just, you know, keep up the good work from, from what I see. Councilor Chines.
Just, just very briefly, just wanted to, you know, share an observation. I mean, this is one of, I think, the real gems of Wakefield, you know, our recreation program. I continue to be impressed every year with the diversity of programs, Dan, that you and your team offer. You know, the creativity that goes into identifying some of these things that, you know, I would never have even thought would be options for, you know, whether it's my children or adults in town. And so I just wanted to really express my thanks to everything, to you and your team for everything that you do. I would love to maybe spend some time at a future meeting, kind of digging into more details around, you know, what sort of the, you know, the statistics have looked like over the last couple of years in terms of enrollment and programs, you know, how COVID has affected what you guys have done. And, you know, hopefully if we're seeing a bounce back from that, I think there's a lot there and would, would love to spend some time at a future meeting, kind of shining more of a spotlight on it.
Absolutely, anytime.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the kind words, I appreciate it.
My pleasure, well, they're well deserved.
Any other counselors or Steve want to add anything?
No, I just want to say that this exceeds all of our expectations. And anecdotally, I was out at a business the other day wearing my recreation department pullover, even though I can't make pickleball at 9:00 AM in the morning. I think that the people that play, they're vicious about giving up their court time anyway. So I'm not so sure I would be welcome. But the woman that stopped me in the store said, I love your rec program. And she didn't have no idea who I was, was from another town and said, you know, I live in another town and you have way better programs than we do. So kudos to you, Dan, and the whole staff. All I hear is, is good things about what's going on, so keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dan.
No, thank you for having me, appreciate it.
And with that, we'll go on to budget 28, veteran services.
Yes, veteran services, we are requesting a decrease to this budget for fiscal 24 of $58,707. There is an increase in personal services of $886, which is for contractual and negotiated increase. Under contractual services, there's an increase in the professional services line item of $407. And this line item is the cost to be part of the municipal agreement between Melrose, Wakefield and Saugus. And it pays for the salaries of the the veteran director and the veteran service officer. Main expenses within this budget, under contractual services, the professional services line item, $55,474. Again, that's the cost of the, our share of the director's salary and the veteran service officer salary. There's a line item for $110,000, which is for the recipients, the chapter 115 benefits. The recipient line item, the town does get reimbursed 75% of what we spend out of that line item. That line item, as you see in the budget, has gone down. The spend has gone down noticeably over the past three years. That's the reason for the reduction of the $60,000. The total budget request for fiscal 24 is $194,513.
Any questions or comments? Councilor Vincent.
Did I do the hand button right?
You did.
Oh, good, thank you. Yeah, there's two things I just wanted to comment on. The first one, the Memorial Day and the Veterans Day expenses. I know that the Veterans Director and the Veteran Service Officer and the Veterans Advisory Board are satisfied with that budget amount because they get other sources of funding that helps pay for the flags and the wreaths that they need for those particular ceremonies. So that part is fine. And as far as the recipients are concerned, in looking at FY21, where only $80,000 was spent, FY22, only $60,500 was spent. And currently in FY23, only $42.8,000 has been spent, even though $170,000 has been appropriated. It's understandable that the amount to be appropriated is reduced from $170,000 to $110,000. I noticed that in the 2020 census, there were 629 veterans in Wakefield, and there's a multitude of surviving spouses as well. And I think all my colleagues on the board and the town administrator would agree that if any qualified veteran and or surviving spouse came in, we would find the money to provide them the services that they're entitled to receive. So I have no other comments about the budget, I think it makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Dombrowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to the recipient line item reduction, if you look at a year to date or the midway point, we're on pace to be about $86,000. And that's actually more than had been expended in prior years. And I, I disagree with the idea of reducing this budget. I think that we need to be able to have an expansion of availability of supports for our veterans. And if that means that we have to do a better job of outreach in order to make sure that we're covering things, I think that we need to do that. Because I think this is more, I think this budget and the amount that we've, the actual spend in recent years has been more a reflection of us as a town not doing enough outreach with the veterans that we have and their families. And so I don't think that, that we should chop this down and then. Chop this down and then if the need arises at some point in a given situation, try to find the money, I, I think it's quite the opposite, I think that we should be. Um, using that money in a more thoughtful and expansive way than we currently are. Uh, I, I think in comparison, it's, 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 it's a, it's a small amount in this budget. Um, for potentially a significant impact for a good number of veterans wi- within our community. So I, I, I do not support the reduction, and the worst case is if we have it budgeted. As is and it's not spent in it, then it, it, it kicks back, you know, into the general fund, so it's not, but as if, um. There's, there's no harm, no foul with that basically, but I think it's much harder. To have a certain amount budgeted and allocate while we're trying to tell departments to spend within their means, and then we have this budget. Um, and then we, we set a cap at it, and then they feel as if more constricted with that, I don't think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Uh, Steve, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add that over the last, um, fifteen years, there, there have been instances where. Um, because of an influx of veterans or, or whatever, we have, um, gone over, that was years and years ago. Um, the Veterans Department knows that no, um, veteran will be turned away, we have multiple bites at the apple to, um. Uh, whether we add money in the fall, if we look at trends or in the spring or reserve fund. Um, they know that we want them to go out and, and, uh. Uh, find as many veterans that are, we can to help them out in that regard. But I think that when we do look at current trends, and I do think this does show where that's been for whatever reason, um. And, uh, so I, I'm, I think I and Kevin are both comfortable, we put a little cushion in there. Um, uh, so, and I know that the Finance Committee Subcommittee had looked at this a lot last year, and they were comfortable with this approach as well.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Counselor Smith Galvin and then Counselor Dennehy, and then Counselor Vincent.
I just have, um, two data questions, one, um, thank you, Counselor Vincent, for that number, six hundred and twenty-nine veterans. What is the trend on that, what has it been over the last couple of years, and are there actually physically less veterans to be servicing? And then my second question is, if you could just give us a little idea of what kind of services fall under that trap, chapter one fifteen funding. I don't know who that's for, whoever wants to answer.
Well, I think the number has been going down, uh, the number of, of have been going down. Um, and it could be rental assistance, it could be, um, training, it could be, uh. We even have issues where we've, um, helped veterans with maybe getting up furniture for the department or apartments and things like that. Mainly it's rental and, um, uh, assistance like that, and, and, um. Spouses that have, uh, surviving spouse assistance, things like that, and then we get reimbursed from the state by a lot of that. But it, it's in arrears. So that kind of covers that, and that shows up on the cherry sheet.
So do we, can I just follow up, Madam Chair?
I guess, go ahead.
Can, could we, um, do we anticipate, given, you know, inflation around heating costs in particular, is that something that. Would be covered under this?
Uh, we would cover them here or elsewhere, but, uh, in either instance, I think we're okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dennehy.
Actually, I lowered my hand because Steve answered my question, I was saying is that we. I agree with doing it budgeting based on the current trends and making sure though that if there, there are needs that nobody is. Is denied and that we have other places where we could get that money from, you know, from reserves or.
Um, it's never happened, we've never denied.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that that's good, and I do think that we don't want to keep money in the budget. That we, we projections show that we're not going to need. So I'm, I'm fine with this.
Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, Steve, I think another benefit that's provided is, um, unless it's provided in another chapter. MGL is the property tax abatement, if you're a disabled veteran, it depends on the level of your rating of your disability. And then you get a certain amount of money, um, reimbursed to you off, off of your real estate taxes, I, I know I actually get it myself, I'll get four hundred dollars off the year. Because I've, I have a fifty percent disability rating, I think that's another benefit that's covered. Um, the one thing I wanted to amplify, um, to Mr. Gill. You had discussions with the Veterans Director about, um, the appropriation for recipients, didn't you?
Yes, yes, I did, I, I had a, a discussion with both the current director and, and the previous director. Uh, both were comfortable with reducing, um, this dollar amount. Um, where the reduction in the need or the reduction. In the one fifteen benefits that are being paid out is not unique to Wakefield, that they've been noticing this. Uh, when, when they talk to their counterparts from other communities, thi- this is pretty much a statewide. Issue that the recipient demand has gone down considerably the past several years.
I, I don't know what the numbers were in twenty-ten as far as the number of veterans in Wakefield, I, I know with the twenty-twenty census numbers show. I will tell you, very generally speaking, as each year goes on. There are less and less people who have served in the military in this country, so I'm not surprised. That the number of people seeking, um, benefits. Maybe on the decline because there's just less percentage of the population that has served in the armed forces.
Counselor Chines.
Now, ju- just a, and, and observation, I, I've been kind of looking through some of my old notes from prior years, uh, in, you know, doing these. These discussions in Town Council and in FinCon before that, and, you know, for all of the, the, the data points that I have, we've never actually spent. Up to the budget, um, in Veteran Services for benefits in the years that I've served on, on Town Council and FinCon, so. I, I am comfortable with the reduction, um, you know, we are not looking to cut benefits, I, I think we're, we're very, very clear on that and appreciate Mr. Mayo. That that's the guidance that you've given the Veteran Services Department. I, I think that we have to be honest in how we're budgeting and, um. You know, that sometimes means that we have to budget more than we, we expect to because costs are going up, but I, I think it also means we have to be. Uh, deliberate about reducing budgets when costs are going down, and, you know, i- if the issue was that we weren't doing outreach to get. Services for veterans, um, uh, we'd be having a very different conversation about that, but I, I just don't see that as the case, so. I, I'm supportive of this, and, and I think, uh, you know, Mr. Mayo, you're hearing a, a strong message from, I, I dare to say everyone on the council that. You know, we will not leave ever, any veteran behind, and if that means we have to reevaluate spending in the future, um, I know that we're all willing to do that.
I also, just to piggyback on that, and then, uh, Counselor Dombrowski, just, um. I did when, when Steve and I met last week to discuss the budget, something that I did suggest, because that, that's my concern too, is that. To make sure the outreach is going, and thank you, Counselor Vincent, for that number, because I don't think I, I knew that number, six hundred and twenty-nine. And so I, I did ask Steve to, let's think about using Jen McDonald to do some, you know, creative outreach, if that'll help, like. I don't want, I don't want us, I want us to do all that we can do to do the outreach, and I was assured, just like today. Um, from Steve, that if, if extra money was needed, we would find it in the budget, so. Um, Counselor Dombrowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, it, it, I know we're talking a lot about veterans, and I think a lo- a lot of people's heads, they're thinking of, of older folks, but. There are a ton of younger veterans too, and I've spoken in recent months to a number of, um, those returning, say, from Afghanistan. For instance, and I have heard so many stories about a, a lot of the mental health challenges that, that, that they face. And, uh, reentry into the, the workforce and, you know, any number of things that, so it's, it's, uh. It's multi-generational, it's not just, you know, the elderly veteran who is looking for, for, um, some support or heating assistance, for instance. Um, and I, I think the fact that Counselor Smith Galvin asked a very important question, you know, what does this mean, that you look, what. When we're talking about, um, recipient benefits, what are they? Um, and you've been on the, the council for years, you know, Counselor Smith Galvin, and I think it just goes to show that as a community, there's not enough awareness about this. Um, and, uh, I'm not convinced that if, if we had a more robust. Awareness program out there, that we wouldn't have more of an interest or need, I mean, some of it is, um, um. Pride, I know, and making sure that we reach those veterans who might feel too proud to be asking for help, I've, I, I've seen that firsthand. Um, some of it may be just in general unawareness, I mean, our population has gone up by, by, I think over two thousand, right, we're at twenty-seven, seven, I think we are now. Um, and, uh, and our population is going to continue to grow, i- if, if development continues as it is currently. Um, and, and I, I just think it's, it's. Because we haven't been as effective at reaching the population from my perspective, as I think we can be. I don't think that's a reflection of the need not being there or existing, and so, um, you know, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I don't support the decrease, and so when we're voting on these budgets, if we could perhaps take this one separately, you know, Madam Chair. Um, but I'll leave it at that, and, and, and that's, that's my position on that, there is a tremendous need out there. I think there's a tremendous need that is not being met currently, and the idea of, of finding out about a particular circumstance and then helping that veteran. There's a lot of steps you, you, that are required in order to get us to that point. Um, and I, and I don't think that that's, that's the kind of messaging that we should be sending to, to those who served, thank you.
Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, well, I'm gonna take a moment and publicly praise the Veteran Director and the Veteran Service Officer, because. My experience in working with them and interacting with them. Is they have been very proactive in not just looking at the state benefits under chapter one eleven. Which, which is part of the budget we're talking about, but helping veterans with their VA disability applications and other. Um, medical services they can get from the Veterans Administration. I think that, um, the Veterans Advisory Board and Veteran Service Officer are taking initiatives like the coffee social once a month. To make more outreach to our veterans, by the way, the number is sixteen twenty-nine, one thousand six hundred and twenty-nine in the twenty-twenty census. So I don't think there's anyone that's a bigger defender of veterans and people that have served their country. On the Town Council other than I, and I am comfortable with this reduction. Because of Kevin's extensive conversations with the Veterans Director, current and former. And with my observations of the outreach programs undertaken. By the Veterans Advisory Board and the Veteran Service Officer, and I can assure each and every one of you, that I ha- if I had any. Concerns that a veteran or a surviving spouse who qualified for benefits would not get this, the. Services and entitlements that they have earned, I'd be the first one to say that the budget had to stay at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I thought extensively about this, and I personally am fine with the reduction being to a hundred and ten thousand. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Madam Chair, it sounds to me that. Counselor Dombrowski is concerned that the town isn't doing enough, and I was curious, is his thought process that. I mean, it seems to me just leaving a number there isn't going to accomplish the goals that he seeks. So I'm wondering, is there an idea that we should be increasing the hours of the people already on staff? That we should be creating a separate outreach position? I'm curious as to what his thoughts are, because I don't really understand when everyone is saying that the town is doing everything it can. Uh, why we would just leave a number there without a plan.
Counselor Dombrowski, do, do you have specific ideas or just? Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, I, I, I think there's, there's several things that we can be doing, um, again, just a general public awareness, most people don't know. About the benefits that are available, these are also reimbursable benefits as, as Mr. Mayo has already said. So in terms of an actual cost to our town, there, it's, it's not, it's, it's not ultimately the, the cost of one seventy to our town, because they're reimbursable by three quarters. Um, but I, I, I have spoken to too many veterans who may not go to those veterans' coffees, and I agree with you, Counselor Vincent. This is not an attack on, on, um, a Veteran Service Lo- Officer, anything of the sort. It's just the idea that we have this population that is very difficult, I know in, in my extensive work with Homebase. Um, and understanding how, you know, the kind of outreach that's required for veterans, it is very difficult to do that. It's very difficult to onboard veterans in, in, into programs or services, it's very difficult, um, to, to have veterans, you know, and I don't want to. Over- overly simplify this or overly generalize, but it's very difficult, um, work to make sure that you're meeting the needs of, of specific veterans, because. They have, a lot of veterans, especially those more recently returning, you know, um, from, um, areas of combat, are, are, um. In, in very different positions, and so I, I, I think we, we can do more, I, yes, do I, do I think there should be more in the way of, you know, supporting job training, yes. Do I think we, we do enough of that now, I don't, um, do I think we should do more in terms of housing assistance, yes, I mean, you're about to present a, a presentation about this idea of. Of, you know, um, this, this housing trust. Uh, I think being able to, 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 to comfortably house our veterans is, is a big consideration in, in all of this, so that's, those are the kinds of supports, yes, I do think we should expand that. Um, heating assistance, yes, I, I've, I've spoken to a number of veterans during this, you know, current, you know, swing of the economy. That have had tremendous issues trying to get by, um, we, with, relative to inflation, you know, and, and, you know, the idea of, of establishing like a, a new apartment, for instance. And Mr. Mayo touched on furniture and whatever else, so I, I don't want to pretend to prescribe, Counselor McLean, exactly what has to happen. I think broadly, we need to have better coordination between our, um, our communications manager and. And our, our, our Veteran Services, uh, you know, um, department generally, and try to do more to, to see where this is at. There is no harm in keeping the budget where it is now, and having a more ro- robust approach to this. And then continuing to revisit this, again, the money goes back, you know, if it's not spent.
Okay, Counselor Chines, and then, um, if, if we will move on to other budgets.
Yeah, no, I, I think, um, I think this has been a good discussion, particularly on this question of outreach, and I, I do want to echo Counselor Vincent's comment. I, I really do applaud our, our Veteran Service Officer, David Mangan, for, I think, doing a lot with outreach, I, I've been to some of the, the coffees. Uh, that he's done, and, um, you know, he's, I, I think he's kind of looking for creative ways to reach out to people, which is wonderful. But it does seem like there's an interest in, um, you know, maybe doing more, so what I would suggest and, and maybe ask. Is that in a, in a future meeting, we could have, uh, our Veterans Department come to, uh, the council, you know, maybe with. Um, maybe with, uh, Jen McDonald from a communication standpoint, and, and talk about, you know, a plan for outreach and what we do today. Uh, what maybe we aren't doing anymore because, you know, we, our experience in the past has been that it wasn't successful. But I, I, I think, you know, let, let's talk about, you know, what that specific plan is, uh, you know, Counselor, um, McLean's absolutely right that. Uh, you know, kind of a, a number in a budget doesn't create a plan, it's the, you know, i- it, it's the, the thought, the. The, the, the process steps that make the plan, and it, it feels like maybe that's a conversation that we need to have in more detail. Uh, you know, when we've got the right people in the room to do so.
Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if I can just make one other, um, very quick comment, currently halfway through this fiscal year. We've spent forty-two point eight thousand dollars, which is going to be about eighty-six thousand at that current trend. Which is twenty-six, almost twenty-six thousand dollars more than, um, what was spent in FY twenty-two, which was sixty. Sixty thousand, five hundred, and in twenty-one, it was eighty thousand, so I think that trend comparing last year to this fiscal year. Shows that the outreach efforts by the Veteran Service Officer and the Veteran Director is working, because it's trending in the right direction in that. More, more recipient money is being allocated this year significantly more, um, than was allocated last year. Like I said, it pays for eighty-three thou- eighty, eighty-six thousand this year, and last year it was only a little over sixty thousand. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent, okay, moving on to Budget Thirty-Six, Streetlights.
The streetlight budget, we are recommending level funding, uh, six years ago, the, the Wakefield Light Department obtained a state grant. That allowed the town to replace the streetlights with LED street lighting, there was a, a savings generated at that point in time. Twenty-five thousand dollars, which we continue to receive, um, there will be more savings once. The capital cost of that projects are paid off in a couple more years. Um, the total budget request for fiscal two thousand twenty-four is one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Thank you, Kevin, any questions or comments? Okay, I see nothing, so moving on to Budget Thirty-Eight, Historical Commission.
The Historical Commission budget, we're requesting level funding, uh, main expenses within this budget, thousand thirty dollars in the printing. Which is used to advertise their meetings, five hundred dollars for other materials and supplies, which is for signage repair and upgrades. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is two thousand dollars.
Any questions, Counselor Dubrowski?
I just wanted to mention briefly because I'm, I'm the liaison to this, um, commission. Um, they had been looking for an increase in funding to their operating budget. Um, but in listening to the sorts of things that have been talked about relative to, um, what they want to do going forward, I, I think it's probably, it probably fits more appropriately within capital. Um, not significant capital expenditures, but it, it, it's less likely to be a recurring annual expense, but I think more likely project-based. So I've already spoken with Mr. Gill and, and Steve Mayo. Um, I do think they have a lot of really good ideas. And I do think that we, we need to really prioritize funding for them going forward when these projects come to fruition. Um, but the idea of just kind of arbitrarily adding a thousand dollars to this budget, I don't think will achieve the objective that they ultimately are looking for. Um, but they're looking to do a lot and, and I think we have some real opportunity. Um, but I just want to flag everyone that if there are asks going forward from a historical commission, it'll, it'll probably be, you know, um, several thousand dollars, you know, in, in a shop, but for very important purposes. So I think that will be a discussion to be had on another day. So I don't want to give the level funding, you know, endorsement as, as some sort of indication that they're not doing enough or don't have a lot of ideas where they do want to invest in our community to preserve, you know, historic character. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, um, thank Counselor Dubrowski for making those comments about the project, um, the projects that may come up in the future from the Historical Commission. Th- thank you for presenting that information.
Okay, we are moving on to Budget Forty-One, Unemployment.
Uh, unemployment budget, we are recommending level funding for next year. Uh, again, this budget is split into two line items, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for the town line item and fifty thousand dollars for the school line item. The total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is seventy-five thousand dollars.
Any questions or comments? Uh, Counselor Chines?
Uh, ju- just an observation on this one. You know, when you look just at the last couple of years, um, you know, the spend has come in well below the seventy-five thousand. But a- again, kind of taking the longer view of this and looking back over, uh, multiple years, that, that this area is a little bit of, um, you know, there, there's a little bit of randomness in the spend year over year. And so while we've had kind of a couple of good years when we've come under, come in under budget, I, I think sticking with the seventy-five thousand makes sense, given that it really is hard to predict where we're going to end up, uh, for this fiscal year and the next one.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to Budget Forty-Two, Reserve Fund.
Uh, the Reserve Fund budget, we are requesting level funding for next fiscal year. Uh, this budget is used for unforeseen, unbud- unbudgeted or underbudgeted expenses and emergencies. Total budget request for fiscal twenty-four is four hundred thousand dollars.
Any questions or comments? Okay, and Budget Forty-Four, Professional Medical.
Yep, last budget is the Professional Medical Budget. We are requesting that this budget be increased two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars over the current fiscal year. This increase breaks down one thousand six hundred and fifty to the tax levy and eight hundred dollars to a water and sewer transfer. This increase in cost, this increases due to an increase in the cost of the services being provided. Uh, this budget is used mainly for new higher physicals, but also includes, uh, police and fire physicals that can run up to fifteen hundred dollars each. Mandatory Department of Transportation physicals for employees with CBL licenses and return to work physicals as needed. The total budget request is thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars with ten thousand coming from the tax levy and sixteen thousand, uh, one thousand six hundred and fifty from the wa- uh, Water Enterprise and one thousand six hundred and fifty coming from the Soil Enterprise.
Thank you, Counselor Chines.
Just very quickly, Mr. Mayo, are, are we changing who we use for, for some of these services? Just looking at the, the line item for ExamWorks that's getting zeroed out?
Um, I think we were going to a, um, a different, um, provider on that. And I think it's, um, the name is escaping me, but.
That's fine.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so those were for Section One Eleven benefits for, um, medical expenses that were charged for police and fire. That before we would send them out to a, one agency, they'd come back with the recommended, uh, pay, uh, for those bills. We are now using a, a, a new vendor. And those costs are now being provided under the article that we do for police and fire indemnification.
Great. Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, move to, uh, accept the, uh, the budgets presented, uh, by Mr. Gill.
Second. And discussion, Counselor Dubrowski.
Um, could I make a friendly amendment to, uh, pull the, um, the Veterans Budget out of that, uh, motion and go to that separately? Because my, my vote will be different on that.
Do I have?
That's fine with me. So then, Madam Chair, my motion would be to accept, sorry, just for, for Sherry's benefit, budgets for eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-seven, thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty-one, forty-two, and forty-four as presented.
A second. That is great. Any further discussion on Counselor Chines' motion? Okay, roll call vote. Um, Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Dubrowski?
Aye.
Counselor McLean?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
And Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
And I am also a yes.
Uh, and Madam Chair, move to accept Budget Number Twenty-Eight, the Veteran Services Budget for Fiscal Two Thousand Twenty Four as presented.
Second. Great. Any discussion? Uh, Counselor Dubrowski?
I just want to say that, that I am going to commit to, um, work with Veteran Services to, to understand exactly where, how we can better serve our veterans. And I hope to be able to see, um, better numbers, uh, as a result, uh, next, next year. But I'll make that commitment tonight.
Okay, um, and a roll call vote, Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Dubrowski?
No.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Have a, have a good night.
Have a good night. Look, just an hour. Okay, moving on. Thank you, everyone. Item Six, Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. I'm going to pass it to Steve.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and hopefully WCAT can, uh, beautiful, pull that up for us. And hopefully everyone can see that and see this at, at home. Um, I'm going to ask certainly that, um, uh, you know, Counselor Vincent and Counselor McLean, who worked hard on this as well, um, can certainly be part of, uh, and it's really their presentation. I'll just start it off. So we've talked a lot about housing and a lot about affordable housing. And that's been a real discussion, seems like forever in, in the town of Wakefield, um, there in, in all surrounding towns. And one tool in our toolbox we don't have is a municipal affordable housing trust. And what, um, the housing trust would allow us to do, uh, is really help, um, all aspects of affordable housing. Um, and we can, um, certainly go through that next slide, please. Thank you. So, uh, Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Five C was enacted in two thousand and five. And the per- and that's the Municipal, um, Housing Trust Fund statute. And the purpose of this is provide for creation and preservation of affordable housing in municipalities for the benefit of low and moderate income households, including senior housing and for the funding of community housing. And since two thousand and five, over a hundred and thirty municipalities have enacted an M H, M A H T F. Next slide, please, please. So what, what this would allow the, the municipality of the town of Wakefield to do is, um, A, we would have to create a mechanism to do is we would create a trust and a bylaw to do this. But it would allow us to really, uh, be proactive in the, um, in the affordable housing market, so to speak. Uh, we could provide financial support for the construction of affordable homes by private developers for non, nonprofit and for profit. We could actually take over and rehabilitate existing homes to convert to affordable housing. We could increase affordability in new housing development projects. Um, develop surplus municipal land or buildings for affordable housing and preserve properties faced with expiring affordability restrictions. Let me talk briefly on, on the, uh, couple of them here. Um, uh, in, in increasing affordability in new housing development projects, a big, um, issue for anybody trying to buy into the housing market is the down payment. And there's a lot of people that can probably make enough money to swing, you know, uh, swing the mortgage payments. But they don't have the deposit. They don't have five percent down. They don't have ten percent down. Uh, and I will tell you that in the banking world, if you can put, uh, you may be able to get a mortgage with putting five percent down, but you're much better putting in, putting down ten percent as far as affordability ratios and the bank's interest in the property. Um, so one thing we could do would, could be help qualified buyers with, would be called second mortgages, soft second mortgages that would help people afford housing and the trust could have the ability to do that. The last thing is preserve properties faced with, in this page, in this page, faced with expiring affordability restrictions. So what has happened, not in the last few years, but, you know, um, between two thousand and eight and two thousand and fifteen, is that, you know, when we, when we as a town or the Board of Appeals approves a project and certain units need to be, remain affordable, they have affordability component. That means whoever the first buyer is from the developer, they buy it at a discounted rate. When they go to sell, they need to sell at a discounted rate, uh, because they shouldn't get the big, big profit. There have been times in the past where people, uh, they go out to market, they go to sell the property and no one can qualify or no one bids on the property for a certain period of time. When that period of time expires, um, the current owner can sell the property. Um, and they can, uh, they will, but they can't sell it, they can't keep the windfall. So the property goes back on, on, in the sulfur market rate and you have someone coming in, market rate and buy it. And then, um, that extra money actually goes into the town. Uh, the town keeps it for affordability, for affordable, uh, housing. And that's happened a few times, not since two thousand and fourteen, I believe. But that's how we have amassed seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars in a, which could help in this trust fund. That's not taxpayer money. It's designated. It's, can only be used for this purpose. Next slide.
Wait, and Steve, could you just go to bullet number four as well, develop surplus municipal?
Okay, why don't you speak on that, Counselor Vincent?
I know something that Counselor McLean and I have given a lot of thought to is the need for affordable senior housing, which once again has been men- mentioned as far back as the two thousand and three Wakefield Master Plan. And I know Counselor McLean and, and Steve and I have had numerous conversations about exploring some municipal land that Wakefield currently has to look down the road to see whether it would be feasible um, for that to be utilized for affordable senior housing. I don't want to speak for you, Mike, but we've had those discussions about that. I don't know if you want to amplify anything.
That's okay, Rob. You can, you can speak for me anytime. But, but yeah, we have, we have, we have had numerous discussions and, um, you know, we, we are hopeful that we may be able to find a location and find the ability to, uh, to do some, uh, possible, uh, you know, affordable senior housing. But it's early on in the process. Um, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars is, you know, unfortunately these days, not a ton of money. Uh, so we'll, we'll have to work as a council to see whether we can achieve some of these goals or whether they are achievable. What I like about this proposal is that it's a start. I'd rather do something than do nothing. And this, this may be something that, you know, gets us, uh, you know, kicks, gets the football kicked off, if you will. That's all I have for now, Bob.
Uh, why don't we go to the next slide, please? Uh, another thing that's important is we, we kind of talked around this a little bit, but support rent assistance and health and safety repairs for low and moderate income households. Uh, create programs to assist low and moderate income homebuyers, including down payment, closing cost assistance. Kind of touched on that before. And educate and advocate to advanced affordable housing initiatives. We could even use some of the money for that. Um, these powers and more are all enumerated under Mass General Law's Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Five C. And I will tell you that some communities around us, um, when they set up their, uh, custom bylaw, they just completely copy entire, um, Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Five C, and almost cut and paste it and put it in there, which may not, may, may not be a bad idea to do it that way. Uh, next size, next slide, please. So we thought about possible funding sources and we want to, um, make it clear that no increase of the tax levy or cost of the tax levy and that's at the bottom is necessary at all. Um, resale of affordable homes if one affordable buyer is in fawn, I've already talked about it. ARPA funds is a possibility, um, other housing stabilization funds that could be established, private donations, um, inclusionary zoning payments, which would need a bylaw. And what that means is that there are some instances, um, where developers would prefer, rather than put, um, affordable units in their development, but make a contribution towards, um, a, um, housing trust for the town. Uh, they, they would rather do that with them and make it a little bit easier. And that is a question that developers ask, um, when they do take a look at our bylaw. Right now, they don't have that option. Uh, we could add developer fees on. We could look at that. Tax title sales if we so wanted. Um, other non-tax levy revenues, maybe we take, um, some extra revenues away in other areas and do that, all up to the council. Um, state bequeaths and, um, a community right next to us that just adopted this, um, right after it was adopted. They had a number of people come in and say they would like that to be part of their estate. They saw housing as a problem and came in. So there's a lot of other funding sources that do not necessarily, um, look to the tax levy in any way.
Another thing I wanted to add, Steve, if I may, um, just reiterate that bottom bullet, no increase to the tax levy necessary. There's a reason that's in all caps. I want to make sure that it's abundantly clear that we are not advocating to become a Community Preservation Act community. That is a completely different state statute. That's MGO, Chapter Forty-Four B. That is something that does affect the tax levy. We are not advocating that we become a CPA. The Affordable Housing, um, Trust is a completely different statute. Thanks.
Uh, next slide, please. Um, so, uh, this is not, um, anything really new. Um, the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and twenty housing production plan on pages sixty-four to sixty-five called for or recommended establishing and capitalizing Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And as I remember, there are, as I mentioned, there are seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars available already for the resale of affordable units at market rates. Um, the two thousand and twenty-three, uh, two thousand and thirty Master Plan, um, you know, components that we put together indicates that almost one-third of all Wakefield households are cost burdened. Um, so, you know, this is, this is kind of the visioning plan we looked at. The map also recommends implementing several of housing production plan recommendations, including an M A H T F, which is a mouthful to say.
Steve, just, uh, when you say the twenty twenty to twenty thirty Master Plan, I assume you're referring to the Vision twenty thirty document?
Yes.
Okay, just, just to be clear, that wasn't a master plan. That's what we're doing now.
What you're doing now, it's the vision document.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so next steps, we'd be looking at, this is for something to consider and kind of to, uh, it's an appetizer tonight to, to think about for the future. Next slide, please, if you don't mind. Thank you. Um, we, we, you know, I think that Bob and, uh, Mike would like to come back at some point, future meeting, to get town council support to, uh, adopt Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Five C as an article at the annual town meeting, um, in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. And that we draft and submit as a proposed M H, M A H T bylaw for approval at that same town meeting, which will be working with, um, Town Council Mullen on. And, um, I don't know if Tom wants to weigh in at all, but he and I have had a number of discussions on this before I go to the next page. Tom, anything?
Yeah, Wakefield would be the second of my communities that, um, uh, have this kind of trust. Rowley adopted it a couple of years ago. They did so largely because they have the kind of exaction bylaw that Steve mentioned where. Developers can either contribute significant infrastructure improvements to the town. Or if they don't want to bother with the hassle, they can just reduce their contribution to money. And then there's the question, well, where does the money go? Well, it goes into the general fund and just becomes part of. Big, you know, fungible mess of dollars. On the other hand, if you have one of these. Trusts, the money gets appropriated directly into that trust by town meeting. And then can be expended for any of the allowed purposes under the statute without further appropriation.
Thank you. There's a couple of references available and I actually had made, next slide, please. I had made a hard copy of the. Massachusetts Housing Partnership Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Guidebook, which is about, I think about sixty pages long for a couple of copies of people who wanted them. I'm old and sometimes I like to read paper. Maybe go out and snow it out, but I will. That's available online and I will probably scan that and send that to everybody and Master General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section five C.
The only couple of things I wanted to add, Steve, is actually that. That handbook is only thirty-seven pages long, so it's less reading, but it's an extremely good handbook. A lot of the information that we collected. For this presentation tonight came out of that Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Handbook. The only other thing I did want to add is. In the event this gets through a and becomes a bylaw, I just wanted to share with the with the council. When the trust is set up, you then have a board of trustees and what the state statute requires is that you have at least five members. Most municipalities have anywhere between five to nine members. One of which is a member of the town council. It's optional whether the town administrator serves on it in either a voting or non-voting capacity. So there's a lot of stuff to do, even if this bylaw got passed, because we would have to have the Attorney General. To approve the bylaw, which normally takes about three months. We would have to advertise to have people. Become members of the of the trust, which would be appointed by the town council. And if everything worked out on the calendar and it went to the spring meeting and it got approved. We would envision that by this time next year, or maybe in late fall, we'd actually be able to help. Some of our constituents with some of the. Some of the information that Steve provided earlier as far as things that the trust can do to help homeowners. With down payments, rent assistance and things of the like. So we 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 know that we brought this up during the budget process. But time was of the essence because it is a proposed bylaw. We only have two times a year that we can actually. Get it done and we were hoping to get this done for the spring. So what we. My Council McLean and I would like to do is have you all read through the materials that. We provided tonight, read through the guidebook that we referenced. And hopefully at a subsequent meeting, we can vote on going forward with drafting a bylaw. Thank you for your giving us your attention tonight for this.
The only thing I would add to that is the guidebook is a very good resource and I hope everybody will look at it. You know, and it'll it'll give you a little anecdotes of what has been done in other communities. You know, in Andover, they're talk about how a single home. That was, you know, perhaps a moderate home with need of some repair in a in a community. Residential community was purchased. It was rehabbed. It was. You know, there was a ground lease and it was occupied by. Moderate income. People of moderate income who otherwise probably wouldn't have been able to live in that neighborhood. There are six up to sixteen trust powers that exist. Communities can choose some of them or all of them. So we need to be cognizant of what they are and what kind of a document. If we approve any document, what what it might contain and what we might want in it. One community was more restrictive in terms of requiring, I believe, a greater percentage vote. You know, to go forward with a project. And it's not all project based. As Steve said, it could also be, you know, soft second loans, things of that nature. But the guidebook is very good and I think it gives you a good overview of. You know, what what goes the thought process that will go into what we decide to do, should we decide to do anything? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, Mike and Bob for that presentation. Steve, I I think we're all going to see each other on Saturdays. If you could bring those extra copies, that would be great. Then we'll save some trees and make Counselor Smith Galvin happy.
I didn't make one for her because I know.
She doesn't need it. She doesn't need it. She's got her iPad all good. My my one comment, and then I see everyone has their hands raised, so I will go to everyone else. I just, I just, I want to reiterate and and Tom Mullins can. Tom can probably just correct me on this, that affordable and senior are not synonymous in this housing trust, right? So so afford, because because in the presentation, it said affordable everywhere and then Bob said senior a couple of times. And I just want to. Clarify that this is not a senior housing. This is affordable housing.
That's right.
Julie, Counselors Julie Smith Galvin.
Thank you. This is a really interesting presentation and I very much look forward to reading the PDF version of the guidebook. One question I have is if we don't adopt this, there's seven hundred and sixty thousand there and presumably we've had it for a while. What happens to that? Does it stay restricted? Can we use it for similar purposes? Any any thoughts on that? And by no means am I saying I'm not for this. I'm just kind of wondering. What we do with that because Council McLean, it is not a lot of money, but you know, it's not nothing either. And it could do some real good in in housing. So Steve, maybe you or Tom could.
Yeah, I mean, it it's supposed to be, it's it's required to be used for that for the housing purpose, affordable housing purpose. I, we would have to figure out the mechanism of how to use it and that's where it gets a little murky to me. So I think the trust gives you that mechanism. It's a good tool in your toolbox. So that's that's what we'd be looking for there. I'd have to do research research on the other part. I would certainly be more comfortable from an accounting standpoint to have a trust to use it.
Yeah, that that seems to be the case and and it'll be interesting to look at, you know, some of the, you know. Seems like we could really shape this to reflect the values that we want in town.
Exactly.
So I will definitely be giving that a lot of thought as well. Thanks for bringing this to us.
Thank you, Counselor Danahue. Hi, thank you for your work on this. It's really interesting. I have a couple of questions. Is one, or what are some of the other neighboring communities that have housing trusts?
I'll tell you, Stonem just just adopted it. Bob, do you have the other list? Uh, Bob Vincent?
I said, so did Reading.
Reading.
Reading and Stonem, okay. In what?
Lexington just did last fall.
Okay. My other question was that one of the earlier slides said that it would provide financial support. Who would it provide financial support to? It was, it was a. I don't have it in front of me right now. It said to developers, like, would we give financial support? To developers to encourage them to create certain housing? How would that work?
I I think we could give, well, we'd have to figure that out through the trust. But maybe we would, maybe the town would subsidize two of those units being lower in cost or something like that.
Okay, so it says provide financial support for the construction of affordable home by private developers.
So that. We may hire one to do it.
Okay, okay.
That's in the statute. That's.
So the housing trust really allows us to kind of decide what we want as a community coming into our. Coming into our town so that we say that we could. Say that this, we want this to be specifically for affordable senior housing.
Well, I think I think that the Board of Trustees would determine on where any money that was available would be spent.
So it'd be the board that would have the decision. So they would have all of the decision to determine what kind of.
That's how most of them have worked.
And where it would go. Okay. So is there a, so. It wouldn't be specifically senior housing. It would have to be something that the board would vote on for.
Correct. It it would be affordable housing, yes.
Okay.
Which may or may not affect seniors, maybe first time home buyers, maybe, you know, a senior can be a first time home buyer as well.
Just to clarify that, the second slide in the second bullet says. Providing preservation of affordable housing municipalities for the benefit of low and moderate income households, comma, including senior housing. We never proposed that this to be exclusively for senior housing. We're just. Presenting that it has a myriad of uses and a multitude of uses. And those are just some of the uses.
Okay. Okay, so.
And and as Stephen indicated earlier, there's sixteen delineated powers under the state statute. Many of these are in these slides. We, the town council, would make a decision. On which of the sixty of the powers that we want to put into our proposed bylaw. We could add additional ones as some towns have done, and you'll see that when you read the handbook. Or we could take some of those powers out. It's those are sixteen that are are optional for us to to put in if we so desire.
Okay. Great, thank you. So I look forward to reading. I look forward to reading the the handbook. Thank you.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you two, Counselors Vincent and McLean. So it's it sounds like just under a third of. Our municipalities have adopted this so far. So of the. The the sixteen, I'll call them the sixteen primary powers that are under this trust. What discussions have you had with other communities that have this this trust in place and and what have been the more the more common? Powers that that they've that they focus on, the more popular? And, you know, what have been some of the the opportunities they've realized or some of the pitfalls that they found?
I would say, Counselor Dombrowski, that I personally have not conducted abroad, had time yet to conduct a broad-based. Discussion with other communities. I think when we look at the documentation. You know, for example, if you look at Stonem's, it looks like they basically. Put all of the sixteen in there. I think, you know, we need to do more investigation to talk to other communities and see what they've learned as a result of their. Participation. I think, you know, my own opinion, and we have plenty of opinions, right, that we'll have to. We have to deal with and and discuss. I think the. Maybe we don't need all sixteen, you know. Or on the other hand, if we don't put in all sixteen, the problem with creating the trust is then. What do you do if later you say, oh, gee, I wish we had, I wish we had the ability to do X or Y and we left it out. So I think that's part of a consideration. You know, as Counselor Smith Galvin said, you know, seven sixty is not chump change. I get that. But we've also thought about the idea of perhaps using some ARPA funds in here to to increase the fund. You know, on the other hand, I would say when you're talking about actual real estate development. No matter what we put in there from ARPA with the seven hundred and sixty thousand, we we really can't be all things to all people. So I think the council should give, you know, significant deliberation to, as was said previously, what are our goals? What do we want? This, you know, this trust that, you know, neither. You know, that the town council wouldn't really be in control of since there are, you know, five to nine trustees. What do we want? What message do we want as a legislative body to send to them? If we create this trust, what are our goals so that it's clear this is what we would like to see, you know, done in town? And I'm not telling you that I think that's, you know, a simple answer, right? I think there's a there's much consideration and deliberation to be done. But to your answer, I I to your question, I have not, you know, surveyed all these communities. I know that Steve has, you know, looked over. What what Stonem did. I know that, you know, Tom Mullin knows what his communities have done. And maybe we can take a look at those and and do some further research. As I mentioned, when you look through the guidebook, they'll tell you what they did in Andover. They'll tell you how they were more. Restrictive in their trust in another community. They'll say that some communities have the town administrator or the, you know, Steve, for example, as a voting member, some have him. Have the town administrator as a non-voting member. So there's a fair amount to be considered here. I'm not saying any, trying to indicate it's simple by any means. I hope that helps.
And to answer your question, when when I spoke with Stonem. Stonem just adopted this recently and they have no funds in it at all. And they really adopted it just for a mechanism. To allow them to kind of move forward if and when something happens. And they actually had a lot of people, you know, come in that want to give money to it. You know, some people in their estates and things like that. So, you know, they they did it for a mechanism, but they had. That was, they had no idea when they when they when they took it forward. That's what they wanted to do.
The other thing to bear in mind. One, one third of the municipalities have this trust fund. But many municipalities are Community Preservation Act communities, or they already have affordable housing committees. And you'll find that in numerous municipalities that adopted this trust fund, they funded through their CPA, through being a Community Preservation Act. We don't have either one of those. We don't have an affordable housing committee. We don't, we're not a preservation, Community Preservation Act community. So this, as Steve indicated much earlier in the conversation, is a first step. To give us another tool in the toolbox. And frankly, what really motivated. Counselor McLean and I to put this together was when. We identified the seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars that had been sitting in the account since February twenty fifteen. As opposed to having a trust fund with nothing in it, the fact that we have a trust potentially would have a trust fund with three quarters of a million dollars in it. Was a real impetus to go through and get something like this started.
And I guess just in follow up with that, that's, I guess, what what strikes me, and I think Counselor Smith Galvin is right in that, I mean, seven hundred and sixty thousand is not insignificant. And it just feels like right now, as best I can understand, that money is just kind of floating. With a lot of trepidation about how to perhaps deploy those dollars. I mean, is that is that fair? Mr. Mail, right now, I mean, we could, we could sort through it, but it sounds like you would have a greater comfort. I think we we as a body would probably have greater comfort if we had. You know, some dedicated place that, or I guess dedicated trust that then, you know, allows for how it's doled out. And I'm thinking of almost in a way like just having like like a dedicated bank account, if you will, with parameters, you know. For for how the the money can be debited from it.
Exactly. I I I think, yeah, credited and debited.
Right, exactly. Credit, exactly. Credit and debit, yeah. But I'm thinking more specifically about what we're currently sitting on right now, because it feels like there's a general law. Like I have a bit of a discomfort just, you know, not knowing how to best deploy those dollars appropriately. You know, not not even in terms of like where the need is the greatest, but in terms of the mechanics of it.
I agree.
Counselor Tines.
Thank you very much and and thank you, you know, Counselor McLean and Counselor Vincent for the work that went into this. I I know there, I know just from. Offline conversations I've had with both of you separately, you know, this has been something that you're both passionate about and spent a lot of time on and and you can see that in the presentation that was put together. So thank you for that and. And and I think, you know, I want to sort of preface my comments just by saying that, you know, I do think we need to move forward with a housing trust in some form. You know, the fact that we have dollars to spend on these types of projects without sort of a structure for those dollars to sit in, I I think is a concern and, you know, I think we've got to, we've got to address that. I I think the question for me is is really how. And so I I hope that over the next couple of months. You know, we can take some time, you know, both sort of as a town council, but also take some time sort of. As we look at the master planning process to figure out some parameters around the trust fund. I I would be less inclined to. Support a trust fund where we're just kind of using the generic bylaw language and putting something together that can be kind of all things to all people. Specifically because while the pool of funding that we have, you know, is not insignificant. It's also not very significant when it comes to some of those powers that are enumerated, right? You know, I mean, if we're talking about developing housing. You know, seven hundred thousand dollars gets you like four thousand, three thousand, four thousand square feet of housing. That's not a whole lot. And so I I just hope that, again, you know, doing this in parallel with the the master planning process and maybe with the planning board. We can come up with a more defined strategy on, you know, how do we, you know, how. we can come up with a more defined strategy on, you know, how do we, you know, how do we set sort of a a vision for how we want to use these funds? What are the types of projects that we want to support? And also, how do we create a vision around how we replenish the funds overall? I mean, ideally, a trust should be something that exists beyond that initial, initial pot of money. And so that does mean thinking about, you know, whether it's, and really, it's beyond just the initial pot of money and even ARPA. But, you know, how do we think about sort of making sure that money comes into the fund over time so we can continue to reinvest in housing? So I I don't have any strong opinions on that, you know, without, you know, doing some more research and and having more discussions. But I I do hope that's something that we're able to spend a good amount of time on before we we approve a bylaw or recommend a bylaw to town meeting, because I I I think the devil is in the details. And I think we want to be exceptionally careful and thoughtful that whatever we put together hews to the vision that I I think we we have for the community.
I absolutely agree with that approach. I I am not an advocate for taking all the delineate powers that are in the statute and just throwing them into a bylaw. But what I found is that Councillor McLean and and Steve and I are three people who have looked at this. Now we have the benefit of the rest of the town council to look at the statute and and look at the other guidance as well. And we collectively can come up with an idea of which powers we want to put into a proposed bylaws and which ones we want to omit, meaning inserted in there. So we welcome your wise and intelligent input in terms of what, you know, stat, what power should be put into, you know, proposed bylaw for this trust. We we need your help, is basically what I'm saying.
Ca- can I ask, you know, Councillor Vincent and Councillor McLean, a- again, recognizing that we we all have to kind of put some more time into this. But do do you guys have some initial thoughts as to, you know, where you think some of the biggest opportunities are? You know, if i- if, you know, if you were kind of able to sort of create this on your own in your own vision, you know, do you have a sense as to what you'd, what you'd recommend focusing on?
I think it's difficult, Councillor Chines, because, you know, there there are so many needs. And as you've indicated, I mean, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars is a start. We're not a CPA community, so we wouldn't necessarily have an ongoing source of funding. Although the town council certainly could in any given year, if the budget allowed, you know, commit general funds to that trust, certainly could, you know, in in whatever amount was available. ARPA funds are another possibility. I have mixed emotions, I'll be quite honest with you, in reviewing it. Because we could do soft, you know, we could put in soft seconds, but all of a sudden then, you know, the fund gets depleted. And if it's, if it's not, if it's only being re-replenished over time through, you know, mortgages, even if it's like a five-year arm, you know, there's only so much one can do. On the other hand, I've always hoped that we could get, we could use these funds to kick off a project, but I don't know that it's enough in and of itself. So I I, you know, my own personal preference was to keep it project-based. But, you know, I'm only one person, and you asked the question, and I'm giving you the answer. And I, but, you know, I've I've also looked into quite a bit the, and still from a thirty thousand level view. But I'm not, I'm not a, you know, real estate developer, but I've asked a lot of questions of a lot of people relative to how these projects are funded and, you know, what we might be able to do. We don't, it's enough, you know, it's very difficult to put together a project. You know, you, you, we would need other sources other than this. But if 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 we could, if we could be a participant in it, and that would make it happen, then that would, I think that would be a great use of the money.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep us moving along. I I thank Steve, Mike and Bob for doing that presentation. I think we've all kind of got reading and homework assignments and conversations to be had. And then my hope is this will come back in front of the council in a couple of months. But I think, I think let's, let's all kind of look into it and and circle back in a little bit. Sound good? Item seven, special legislation. That WMGLD energy park once again.
Yes, I know that we both have, we have Mike McCarthy and Peter Dion on. Sherry could bring them over.
Yeah, they're coming over right now.
And Tom Mullen is pretty much up to speed on this, Madam Chair, so you may want to put it over to him first.
Yes, so as you know, last November, a town meeting under Article Five of the regular town meeting warrant voted by two-thirds to authorize the town council to petition the state legislature for permission to grant an easement under Article ninety-seven of the state constitution to allow the municipal gas and light department to use one acre portion of a parcel on Hemlock Road as an energy park to serve both the high school and the vocational school, including batteries, solar generation, natural gas generation and related equipment. We've been working with the MLD on the form of special legislation and only recently learned that the deadline for submitting special legislation was last Friday, the twentieth. Not wanting to miss the deadline, we filed it through our state delegation last week. And now we're looking for a confirmatory vote authorizing that submission. I'm sorry for seeking permission after the fact, but the deadline surprised everybody involved. And the action was taken only in in reliance on the town meeting vote, which instructed the town council to submit such special legislation. So I request that the council vote to authorize the submission to the state legislature of a request for special legislation substantially in the form presented to carry out the intent of the two thousand twenty-two regular town meeting under Article Five.
So moved, Madam Chair. Mainly so I don't have to repeat that.
I I wrote it down. That was good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. And then, uh, thank you, Tom, for explaining that. And then discussion. Peter, Michael, do you want to add anything?
No, I, I think that pretty much sums it up.
And I, and Steve and Tom or or Michael, just the the timing's really important here, right? I remember, Peter, you mentioning like, because of supply chain issues, like, until it's approved from the state, we can't really start buying materials. And so, uh, Tom, did Senator Lewis and our delegation file the bill?
Yes.
They did, okay.
We sent it, we sent it to the delegation, and Representative Wong picked up the original and filed it noon on Friday, five hours before the deadline.
Great. And so we, the delegation is aware of how important this is to get through quickly. Okay.
They are, yep.
Um, any questions from my colleagues? Uh, Councillor Dombrowski?
I would just add that gas and light, I think it would go a tremendous way if if gap, if you were interested in supporting planting more trees around town, understanding this project. So I don't know, Mr. Dion, you know, to what extent you can make that commitment this evening. But if we saw some more trees as a result of this, I think that would be a win-win for the community. And if you want to give, if you want to give a number of certain, I'm happy to have you commit on the record to that, too.
All right, well, we've already committed to replace the hundred and twenty-eight that were taken down. And we've been doing in the neighborhood of seventy-five to a hundred a year for the past several years anyway, so we'll continue to do that as well. We've been working with, uh, Mr. Fazio for, for Dennis, with Dennis for quite a while, past, I would say, at least six or seven years, uh, with trees on town-owned land. And that number is, you know, we're, we're getting kind of caught up with his needs. And some of the the needs that he has will have to wait for after, you know, water or paving or sidewalk work. So we're kind, we're near a saturation point with that, pending, you know, the next pot of his work and the town's work on water and so, uh, and paving and sidewalks. So last year, we began a program to offer additional sixty trees to residents. And then the first sixty that signed up, we planted them last year, and we're going to continue that program as well.
So we could probably get the one twenty-eight number up to just like two hundred and just round it up, right?
Easily.
So can we maybe, so can we just really just revise that one twenty-eight number up to two hundred then tonight and just figure out two hundred?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, that's great. Thank you.
It's probably less than we're gonna do, so.
That's, that's fine. Do I hear three?
I think part of the issue is that just over time, you, you know, we're gonna do many more with with, with Dennis. Because wha- what we've run into right now a little bit is that the the roadwork needs to precede the tree planting. So there's a lot of trees that we, a lot of streets we really like to plant trees on, but we got to get the sidewalks and the paving done first because it, we had an issue on one of the streets that it kind of overlapped and it wasn't really effective.
I just think, you know, you're representing, you know, all the folks in town, understanding that it's a big issue for a lot of folks, including a lot of folks on on this council, probably universally on this council. So just, you know, understand that that's, that's like a a high priority, especially when we're talking about any kind of deforestation. And especially that area that we're talking about, the deforestation happening in, you know. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate your commitment to to continue to to try to exceed those goals.
Yeah, the the one twenty-eight, we'd really like to treat it as separately because we're, uh, we're already talking to the cons comm about a potential open piece of land that we would try to reforest that's town-owned. In addition, obviously, anything around the Hemlock Road site would obviously be appreciated. So any, any trees in that area that we, we could help, you know, reforest or even supplement what's there is, is obviously, that's, that's an easy first part. And then we obviously want to continue the program we're doing on the other side.
Well, now we have a commitment of two hundred to be treated separately, so all the better. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Councillor Smith Galvin, did you have your hand raised?
Um, yeah, I'll just, I'll just add that, um, I I think it's no, I mean, I'm very much in favor of this. I know that WMGLD has been working very hard with the Conservation Commission. I'm really happy to see this filed. You know, I, I, Councillor Dombrowski, without a doubt, the trees are important, but this is really, really important from a climate standpoint. And from, you know, supporting at least one school and hopefully two schools. So thank you, WMGLD, for all you're doing on this and anything that you need from us. Or from me personally, I guess I'll speak for myself. We're happy to help moving forward.
Thank you.
I I also just, to make a note, Sherry and Steve, and and somewhere, something that Councillor Smith Galvin mentioned this weekend as we went to the Mass Municipal Association, as they give innovation awards. And and Julie mentioned that this project is just so innovative and that we should submit next year and win a great certificate to be hung up at town hall. But it is, it is, you know, the collaboration between our gas and light department and, you know, the vocational school and hopefully the new high school is just, I think other towns can learn from us once it's all the way through. So just a little note to remember to submit next year. Councillor McLean?
Well, last, and last week, I was at two separate meetings where I was approached by people from other towns. There's two other towns that want a lot of information on us because they want to build energy parks now, too.
I think we're gonna be a national model, not just a state model.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one question, which was, and and I don't want to get into anything that we're not supposed to get into. But relative to planting trees on townland, all the discussion that we've previously engaged in tonight relative to possibilities of, you know, seeking locations for housing. Will the, and it might be more a question for the town administrator, will the town council have a say in whether, you know, certain townland that we may wish to have for other uses, the, what winds up being covered with trees, for example. And I have nothing against trees. I love trees.
My, my, my feeling is yes, but maybe Tom can jump in. Tom Mullen, you're talking about town-owned land that you may want to use as something else.
Yeah, I I think that Peter had indicated that there may be townland, and I don't know which townland we're talking about. And that's, that's what makes me a little uneasy. I would just like to know. Maybe Tom Mullen can answer that.
You know, this actually reaches an issue that I think the Conservation Commission has started to talk about. They've been concerned about having some kind of permanent restriction placed on whatever piece of land the trees are to occupy so that they don't get planted in year one and then torn out in year ten. The problem with that is one that lawyers call merger. That is, you, you can't, you can't give yourself a restriction. And so the restriction would have to be held by some separate entity that could enforce by going to court. Something like a a conservation trust. You know, query whether we want to go that, that far or whether it would suffice just to think deeply about where we want to put the trees and make sure it's an area where ten or fifteen years from now, future boards are not going to be looking to put something else there.
I think I had mentioned at town meeting that, you know, the gas and light has land of its own. And it is theoretically possible that an acre that's already existing and with mature trees could be offered as a permanent protection as opposed to, you know, reforesting an area of town-owned land. I just bring that up as, as I thought that might be a better option. But I don't really know what land we're talking about, which makes me nervous.
That the, the portion of the land behind our BB substation is part of the offer that we've made to the Conservation Commission.
Two and a half acres.
Yes.
Of a, of an area of critical environmental concern. In addition of the trees.
And and where would the trees be going? Do you know?
There's been discussions that the trees might be planted. This was the product of some discussions between the, between Dennis and and Rebecca of the Conservation Commission and our group. There were discussions about locating the trees behind Maplewood Playground off of Arundel Ave, which at one point in time, I think fifteen to twenty years ago, twenty years ago, there was a discussion about putting a soccer field there. But frankly, we'll, we'll put them almost wherever, wherever you tell us to put them. We're, we're, we're just trying to be accommodating.
I understand. I very much understand. I'm just trying to, Arundel, I believe, is town-owned property that the town bought years and years ago from a developer. And I'm just, I'm not sure, does the town council, Councillor Mullen, does the town council have a say in this?
Well, to the extent you're talking about land that is held by the town and in the custody and control of the town council, sure. And I think the Arundel Ave property would fall into that category. It's held, as I understand it, for general municipal purposes. And so it's not, say, conservation land, it's not land held by any other board.
Right, it's not parkland.
It's not parkland, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So Steve, I know, you know, we, we've talked about, more about trees these last couple of months than I think I have in my six years on the town council. I don't think it's, you know, and and Dennis came a couple of meetings ago. You know, I'm looking forward to him coming again. I think kind of knowing what he's asking of gas and light, where these trees would go would be really helpful for us to hear. Also, Councillor Smith Galvin had the idea of the notices on the trees before they got cut down. And I want to get an update on that and that how that's going as we get through the winter and we start up again in the spring. So maybe something, you know, I, I, Dennis seems to be the point person. So whether it's you telling us via him or him coming in front of us, kind of just giving us an overview of where trees are being planted in relation to this, and then also just his own goals. I know we talked about a website with all our, you know, the, the, the tree website that used to exist a while ago. So some, something I think that can answer a lot of the questions that were asked by Councillor McLean.
Sure, yep.
Okay, any other questions on this energy park? We do have a motion in a second. If not, I will do a roll call vote with my alphabetized list. Councillor Chines?
Yes.
Councillor Danahy?
Yes.
Councillor Dombrowski?
I.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Councillor Vincent?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Great, thank you. Thank you, Peter and Michael.
Thank you.
Guys.
Good night. Thank you.
Item eight, appointment.
Madam Chair, move to appoint Haley McHatten-Baloo to the Conservation Commission to fill an unexpired term ending April thirty, two thousand twenty-five.
A second.
Great, any discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Aye.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Great. Item nine, donations.
Madam Chair, move to accept and expend a gift or gifts in the amount of one hundred and ten dollars to the council on aging from various donors with thanks.
Second.
Great, any discussion? And roll call vote, Counselor Chines?
Madam Chair, I think Counselor Dabrowski has his hand up.
Oh, I missed it. Counselor Dabrowski, apologies.
Just, just one question, like kind of going forward. We do these often, is there a way that we could maybe think about kind of grouping these so we don't have to do them at every meeting, but like on a quarterly basis or something along those lines? Is there any reason we couldn't do that?
I, I think the only issue is that it needs to be accepted and expensed and expended.
Before they deposit the money.
Yeah, we do monthly, I, I mean, yeah, I know, it's.
I mean, I, I, as long as I've been on the council, that's how, that's how we've always done it, but it just feels like really inefficient because it's such small, small money. We're doing like, you know, these votes every time, but, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we want to get them to it so they can spend it.
That's fair.
Good question. Okay, so Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Aye.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
And myself is yes.
Great. Madam Chair, move to accept and expend a gift or gifts in the amount of one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars to the library from various donors with sincere thanks.
Second.
Great, okay, any discussion? Great, roll call vote, Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Aye.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Item ten, do I have a motion to approve the January ninth, two thousand twenty-three town council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second, great, any discussion? Okay, Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Aye.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Item eleven, announcements. Counselor Dennehy?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everybody is that our final master plan community meeting is going to be on February first at six thirty PM and that is going to be on Zoom. So you can get the Zoom link on the town website. And it's, again, this is going to be our last public engagement, so really hope as many people as possible can be there and have their voice heard.
Thank you, Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just really wanted to make the announcement and make the reminder about our special town meeting coming up this Saturday, September twenty eighth, sorry, September, January twenty-eighth at nine AM at the high school field house. So I, I think, you know, many people in town are aware of this, but this is the first step in the process of considering a vote for the new high school project. If the, if the project passes a town meeting by a two-thirds majority, the second step would then be a vote later in March. So, you know, I, I hope that, you know, everyone who's able considers going. I mean, this is a, a big project and also a really important project to help us make sure that we're meeting the, the educational needs of our students, something that, you know, I personally support and I know, you know, most of the, the boards in town, school committee and FinCom have supported as well. So really encourage people to come in, attend and, you know, personally ask them to vote yes for that project. There will be free childcare available, thanks to the Boys and Girls Club of Stonon and Wakefield and thanks to Counselor Butt for making the request many months ago. And so, you know, for folks that do have kids that they need to worry about, it should be a good morning for them to enjoy some time with some friends, doing some great activities, too. So please, again, please come out and vote. And also a big thank you to all of our town departments that support town meeting, certainly Betsy Sheeran and the Clerk's Office and all of her volunteers, the DPW, the school department and so forth for making, making town meeting happen.
Thank you, Counselor Dabrowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the falling snow in the backdrop, I think it's the perfect opportunity to remind folks about the importance of, of adopting fire hydrants by your property. Incredibly, incredibly important from a safety perspective. It also helps out our, our, our fire department considerably. I've, I've seen many firefighters around, around town following big storms, having to dig out hydrants. But whatever we can do, just as we're, you know, shoveling our own walkways or driveways or whatever the case may be, don't forget about the fire hydrants, please. It's so incredibly, incredibly important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Smith Galvin.
So I will piggyback on Counselor Dabrowski and ask that you also plow sidewalks. We do have a bylaw for businesses and multifamily units over four that it's required and even just for households, if you can do your own or neighbors, if they're not able to, really helps everybody get around and the students get to school and people get to the train, so. And, and Steve, I see that a reminder went out to businesses today, which is great. I, I don't think we're meeting before February first, the Environmental Sustainability Committee. It also is doing an event on February first, so you can take your pick between doing Zoom with the master plan or coming live and seeing real people at the library where Republic Recycling is going to be speaking about the dos and don'ts of recycling and, and, and what happens to recycling and any question you have around recycling. So that is February first at the library in the evening. And then I see that we actually have a flu clinic this coming Thursday as well. So if you haven't gotten your flu shot, this is the perfect time to do so. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I just say, Madam Chair, since Counselor Dabrowski and Counselor Smith Galvin mentioned snow, the forecast looks clear for Saturday for town meetings, so.
I, I was kind of wondering, but I didn't want to jinx it, so thank you for looking.
Knock on wood, so far the, it looks like we have a clear day. So no, hopefully no weather excuses for people to be there.
And, and just to, just to go on this snow theme, you know, we live in New England, this is not a surprise. You know, I can hear the plows on Main Street from where I'm sitting. So thank you to everyone who does keep our streets clean and if you can do your part of your sidewalks and fire hydrants, that is much appreciated to make sure our towns stay, stay safe. Counselor McLean, did I see your hand go up for a little bit?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I had lowered it. I'm good. Thank you very much.
That's great. Steve, Tom or Sherry, anything to add?
Nothing, thank you.
No, thank you.
All set, thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna do some really quick announcements. Just one, I just want to thank the HRC for the MLK and Coretta Scott King event last week. It was, it was so nice to be back in person. They had a lot of students throughout the town involved. And thank you WCAT for filming it. If you didn't watch it, it is really powerful to watch. We used video and song and dance and poetry. It was a really nice event, so thank you to our HRC who always goes above and beyond on one of their premier events that they host every year. Just want to tell everyone, one of the duties as chair is to work with our town moderator, moderator and our chair of FinCom and there is a new FinCom member, so through the charter. And so I think she'll be going to her first meeting on Thursday, but just wanted to report back as a liaison and also one of my duties. And then just to tell everyone, as I mentioned before, many of us went to the Mass Municipal Association meeting this weekend, learned a lot about infrastructure, the governor and lieutenant governor's new priorities. Counselor Dabrowski got a great picture with our new governor. But I will tell you that whenever we mention we're from Wakefield, people immediately know it because of the lake. But at that conference, people immediately know it because of Tom Mullins. And I cannot tell you how many people come up to us and tell us we are so fortunate to work with Tom and have Tom be a part of our town. So I just wanted to share that. I think you got more votes than the lake this year, which was, which is always nice to hear about how great.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, right?
So many people, it's like, it's weird, yeah, it's this really fan club you've got, Tom.
Yeah.
I'm shocked.
I mean, it's a great fan club, it's a great fan club, but yeah, so many people.
Wow, well, thank you.
Yeah, so just wanted to share that and thank you for all that you do for our town. Okay, item number twelve, matters not anticipated for the agenda. Okay, and then item thirteen, adjournment. Our next regular town council meeting will be Monday, February thirteenth at seven PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and roll call vote, Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Aye.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
And Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, seven zero to adjourn. Everyone stay safe and see you Saturday at town meeting.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.